Call this regular meeting council for Monday, May 15th, 2017. First on the agenda is a public hearing to deal with a couple of our bylaws. I have a statement to be read here for this public hearing. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 890 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following bylaws. Bylaw number 644-2017, a bylaw that provides licensing and regulation of businesses in the District of Tumbler Ridge. Bylaw number 648-2017, a bylaw to recommend District of Tumbler Ridge zoning bylaw 585-2012. The proposed bylaws have received first and second readings but have not passed their reading or have not have been adopted by council. Notices of the public hearing have been published in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act. Also, a copy of the proposed bylaws and any submissions to council received from the public have been available for first time in this town hall as required by the Local Government Act. Once called by the chair, please begin your presentation to council by clearly stating your name and address. Please make sure your presentation is as brief as possible. After all have had an opportunity to be heard, anyone wishing to have further input may once again be heard. Council will not debate with each other or members of the public. Council will not ask questions. We are here to hear you. Everyone will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. Please refrain from any conduct that would intimidate others or discourage them from speaking. All will then be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present their heard views on the proposed bylaw. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It is an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw and make that be known to council members who are here with you with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. It is not a question or answer. It is not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council, members, staff, or those in attendance who may be opposed to your particular view. Anyone who believes they may be affected by the proposed changes to the proposed bylaw will be heard and/or maybe may make a written submission. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please comment your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. Council members may ask questions following your presentation, but our function tonight is here to listen to the views of all the public rather than debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After this public hearing has been conducted and concluded, council may without further notice give whatever effect council pleads proper to the representations made at this hearing. Thank you. It's nice to see you all here. Thank you. So, I guess at this point, before we'll be open to whoever would like to make a submission on the bylaws, I guess we'll just run this, but first one to stick their hand up and get up there and, yes, ma'am.
April Cooper, Tumbler Ridge. I have several issues with this bylaw. I believe this will absolutely completely destroy all markets and craft fairs. Forever Young Society, it says in here that they will pay $50 for their craft fair. I made some calls today. The $5 million liability insurance for 30 vendors will cost them almost $4,000. They charge us $10 for our tables. We give them 10% of their sales. Upon speaking to council, I was told that they'll have to up the price of their tables. If they up their price of their tables to $125, do you think any of us vendors can afford to pay them $125 plus another 10% of our sales? It's impossible. It will absolutely destroy that fundraiser for them and for this community. I'm in several markets out of town. I had 30 out-of-town vendors coming this year to that fundraiser for them. I've had several in at two other markets, straight at the Trend Hotel. They've eaten in our restaurants. They do not have to have business license in any of their districts, so they are not going to come here. It clearly states in this bylaw if they are not residents of Tumbler Ridge, they must still have a business license to be at a craft fair or a community market here. I'm on the board this year for the fall fair for the saddle club. I had over 50 vendors coming to that this year. I will lose each and every one of them. I myself have been turned down for a business license by the District of Tumbler Ridge, which I have a spot to speak later about. You have refused me a business license, so I cannot go into any of these, no matter what. I have been told by council that Forever Young pays $50 for a permit, and that gives all the vendors a license. But clearly, later on in your bylaw, it says that we must produce our licenses to you before we're allowed to participate in these markets. If we don't have a license, we can't produce it. If you don't give us a license, we can't have one. Direct sales, it's not really my thing, but I will speak up for them because nobody seems to have showed up. They have rules in their own company. If they do not have stock on hand at their house, they do not need a business license. But now, this bylaw says they must have a business license to go in a craft fair in Tumbler Ridge. So it is completely going to take away all markets, all craft fairs. The Forever Young Society, that's a huge one for them, a three-day market for them. I called two different insurance places today. Both said the same thing. I myself, when I went in a trade show, had to pay $125 for $5 million liability insurance to be there. They get my deal. It's $125 per vendor. There's no way they can make any money. They just, and the way this bylaw is stated, you're pretty well saying anybody on the buy-sell, the buy-sell needs a permit. Anybody selling on the buy-sell needs a license. They're selling to make profit out of their home. I mean, there's so many, there's such a gray area in this bylaw. It says that the fines here are $50 to $10,000. So who gets the $50 fine? Joe Blow down there selling whatever, who gets the $10,000 fine? Me? Doesn't state in there what the offenses have to be for the fine. You've just left a whole big gray area of who gets what fine. And I myself will show later on today that I follow all government rules to sell my product in the North Peace region. And yet, I can't sell in Tumbler Ridge with this bylaw. Thank you, April Cooper, Tumbler Ridge.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi. Rose called. Oh, Snyder.
Sorry.
Close to have it. On behalf of the chamber, we have had some inquiries, sorry, inquiries, and I'm too short, come in regarding some of the, first being the, and also, I gotta sit down because I got a sore foot. Thank you. It doesn't make much difference height-wise anyway. There has been a lot of comments, a lot of queries come through us regarding how this seems to be laid out, and we understand there's some clarity with, hopefully we'll be coming tonight in some of these sections on the market squares especially, home-based business, how it's established. April covered a good portion of the same issues we had written out here. The clarity of one of the sections, Section 4, I believe, yes, Part 4 licensing fee, in regards to organizations with their nonprofit, they don't have to pay a fee, and that's understood. Then there's making references to mobile vendors. So the question came up regarding nonprofits such as The Lions who possess a mobile vendor opportunity. They have a product. They sell it. It has set prices. It hits the criteria. Where the money goes after that is that, do they need to abide by the regulations that have been set up in the mobile vendor section? We're also wondering about the door-to-door solicitation. It says very clearly, in a very short sentence, pretty much absolutely no solicitation door-to-door. How does that affect things such as model drives, children selling Christmas candies at school to raise money? I think the intent was probably out of town people and things like that, but does that fall under absolutely no solicitation? So looking to see if we can just get some of those clarities. Did I miss anyone? Sorry. Apologies, I got in real late. We have also, if I can, yes, do you also have a few more?
Others brought to us were that the community market license fee seems an additional fee to the business license fees that all vendors are required to have. And so the request is could the district remove that additional fee but require the license application from the community market organizer? It seems a fee on top of a fee. Another is about that insurance that April spoke to, and I did some inquiries as well. It speaks that a market or special event organizer needs to arrange $5 million comprehensive insurance of district properties to be used with the district listed as additional insurer. And this would be a direct additional cost to vendors. And my question is, would not each business have insurance that would already cover them? And other groups who use the community property do not have to purchase $5 million? I wanted to give some examples. If a citizen will book room 4 or 5 for a wedding, they would have to pay a SOPA music fee, a liquor license, and maybe a setup fee. W N M S doesn't pay a fee for the use of the pool and parking lot for the triathlon because their event is considered part of recreation center operations. Minor hockey usage of the arena is covered by minor hockey insurance. And so I'm wondering why that additional insurance is required for something like a community market? What risk element is the district protecting through that request? And finally, the district requires an application with list of retail and food vendors at the community market two weeks prior to the event. I'm wondering if the district will use that list to decide who could or could not participate in the market, and if so, what criteria would be used? If not, that's fine, just clarification on that. And a last clarification, if a food or retail vendor applies for a temporary license, which in this new revised bylaw is 30 days, they're able to sell their wares more than once, are they able to sell their wares more than once during the month? Or do they have to have a special license each time? So could they have community market, a special event, independent sales all within that 30-day umbrella? And I was wondering why the bylaw doesn't note that it actually is a replacement to bylaw 445 from 2002. It's not in your language.
Those requests from the chamber, it should be nice for us to get them in writing, for sure. And April, I think if you're writing, it'd be nice to have that in. I missed things. Write the things down so it's easier to go. Yes?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. We had additional just come in, and I've got some parts of the bylaws late. I had a few other calls come in just as I was heading over here. Might we be able to add a few other items to that list that have been just late submissions? One of them including clarification of events, special events versus, what would we call this, special event permit versus a temporary permit. There was a few points they were making, and I wasn't able to speak to them rapidly at that point for clarification. And events taking place on district property. For example, the one that I use personally was the, down at the golf course, when we are having a special event being TR Cares, and we are utilizing district property when we require that additional insurance and things of that nature. Just some clarity of points that have come up in reading documents. It seems a little vague, and in many places for us, open to interpretation, and I feel that's probably something you don't want in your bylaw. You want it pretty clear of what it's stating at the time. So as April indicated, where are the fees? Who are they, how are they interpreted? And is that at the discretion of the bylaw officer or the alleged offense? So those are kind of things that would come up that would require more time than tonight, perhaps.
Seeing none, I have this closing statement. Before closing this hearing, I'm going to call three times for any further speakers on any of the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. For the first time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representations? For the second time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representations? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representation? I mean, no further speakers, I declare this meeting closed. Thank you. Thank you for your, but give us some food talk. Okay, going on in the meeting. Approval of the agenda, I've got a few changes to the agenda. You have 5, it's going to be 5.4 is the delegations. Your part, speaking to, I guess is the way to put it. And 8.9 is EDIT request, stated things, so it's time-relevant. So approval of the amended agenda? Secretary? Have some time? On favor? Okay, adoption of minutes for May 1st, 2017.
Recommendation that council adopt the minutes of May 1st, 2017, regular council meeting is presented.
Secretary? Special meeting for, of, May 8th, 2017. Counsel McKay.
Requesting council to adopt the minutes of the May 8th, 2017, special council meeting is presented.
Secretary? Counsel Kirby? On favor? Okay, any questions arising from those minutes? Seeing none, the action summary sheet on page 39. Is there anything somebody left an address on there?
Thank you, Michelle. I'm just wondering if we could, I don't have any special relevant to this, but I'd like to go back to the delegations that we had in the open here, just for point of clarification. We want to answer it. There were a number of comments made, and did I understand that we requested or appreciate the written comments that were made here verbally?
Yes.
And that we would be getting those and then deal with that issue at a future date? Am I on the wavelength here?
I requested that. It's up to the, you know, if they want to do that or not. It would sure be nice.
And again, I just want to be clear. I don't know if it's clear with those that are here as representatives, but, so we will get the written, they're written, the information presented in writing, so we can, council can have a look at that and then place it on a future agenda to deal with it further? Is that?
I think you have to draw that to where you're at, or we'll have to listen. As correct, we'll also provide council with the transcript of what was asked at the meeting as well.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, done with that. Petitions and delegations. 5.1, April, did I have you come up to delegation table?
I've got a couple things to bring with me to show. Is that all right?
I noticed you put three petitions in here, and I gathered that was, you have more time to talk. There's 15 minutes for delegation, but as long as you're bringing up new stuff, I'm not going to stop you from talking.
All right.
But if we start repeating, that's when I will go.
Okay, I have also made copies for each and every one of you to look at as I go through. May I approach and...
Sure. You bet.
Okay.
Thanks. Next. Thank you. Next, hold on.
Yep. Okay, so the first topic I'd like to talk about is my business license. I have approached the District of Tumbler Ridge for a business license and have been turned down. I have been told that my business license, that it must be in a commercial kitchen. As you can see clearly on page one, that I am highlighted in yellow, I am selling lower-risk foods. A permit is not required. I do not have to have a permit from Northern Health to sell what I'm selling. On page 2, it also says lower versus higher risk foods. Lower-risk foods are foods that pathogens have trouble surviving in because they are drier, have a high sugar or salt content, or more acidic. All my products are acidic, which makes them low-risk. I have more of a chance, no offense, anyone, of getting poisoned by a sausage at the pancake breakfast for Gris Fest than you have get poisoned by my pickles. Like, it's almost impossible. It is a high risk, and that's why I don't have to follow Northern Health. You can see clearly the difference on page 2 of high-risk foods, the difference between high risk and low risk. Which high risk would be meats, eggs, things like that. That is all high risk. On page 3, I've written on top, low-risk foods. I have spoke to a council member that asked me to provide that at this meeting. I have done so. Everything I sell is listed there. And I've just put extra information on here, numbers where you can phone and get all these same information. They are all government offices to get that information. On page 8, I have given you a total list of all low-risk foods, not just pertaining to me, but pertaining to other people that join in the craft fairs and the markets in Tumbler Ridge to show that they are also able to sell. Bake goods, cookie sales, kids selling cookies, whatever it may be, these are all considered low-risk foods. Do not have to be made in a commercial kitchen. Do not have to be approved by Northern Health. I have then, on the next page, given you a list of higher-risk foods. At the very top there, you will see antipasto. I sell antipasto. The reason my antipasto is not a high-risk food is I do not put any seafood in mine. Mine is completely 100% vegetarian, which means it goes back to being a low-risk food. So they passed new laws January 1st of 2017 for someone like me that sells canning. These laws are on the next page, and I have to have labels. My labels must include product name, net quantity, vendor name and address, list of ingredients, durable life date. The durable life date is only if it has a shelf life of 90 days or less. Mine has a shelf life of 18 months. I do not have to have an expiry date on my product. And then last, nutritional facts and table, that's optional. If I gave you guys that, nobody would buy it. So that's about on there. So I have brought my product that shows my labels. I've gone up and above what I have to do to have my labels done. I have also brought with permission a product from Fort St. John with the label. They sell the same product I do. They are licensed in the District of Fort St. John, but I can't get licensed here. I have, on the next page, you will see, it's very small, this is what they sent me today. It says ExoBi. That is a lab in Fort St. John. It is not mandatory for me to do this, but I take each and every one of my products, and they're tested at this lab in Fort St. John. Every single one of my products has passed. For pickles, they have to be below 4.6 or below. I will let you know they're coming in under 4. Salsas and antipasto have to come in at 4.2. I more than need these margins. This is money I spend out of my own pocket. I have to pay $30 for each thing I sell to have them tested. My testings for last year have expired because I'm about to come off to canning season. They have to be done every year for me to sell in certain markets that I want to go in, so I pay this and do this. Now, somebody selling baking or something does not have to have that. They can go in a market without it. On the next page, you will see, this comes from the District of Tumbler Ridge on your site. I can go in there and I can punch up, as you can see, Canada Business, and I can punch in Tumbler Ridge. Then I punch in, what is my business? On the next page, I punched in pickles. If you go to the next page, it comes up, no permit needed. So if you go, the only way I need a permit is if I sell over 30,000 a year, and, well, I was in the negative last year, so definitely didn't come close to that. So I'm not going to say what business I targeted on my next page, but I put it in there so you can see the difference. So you can clearly look on the next page and see the business that I put in there for the same site, for District of Tumbler Ridge. And if you continue onto the next page, it comes up, four permits must be needed to run that business in B.C. and in the District of Tumbler Ridge. So it shows you the difference between running my canning and other things that are being run. I don't have to have these, and I see absolutely no reason why the District of Tumbler Ridge continues to turn me down for a business license. I have no problem giving you guys my money. I really don't, because then I can claim all my losses, all my taxes, so, you know, and I have no problem even paying the $130 that you guys are saying, you know, for the business license to go sell in Dawson Creek, Fort St. John. I honestly don't need that. This will be the, if my law 644 goes through, this will be the only district that demands that. No other ones can. I have sold in Prince George, I have sold in Chetwind, I've sold in Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, Grand Prairie. Never come across any of this. I have also given you on here where you can look up and see a list of high risks and the differences of what the rules have to be. You can check out this website. What I sell, there is literally, I go up and above from what I have to do. I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem if I produce, council, with my laboratory results where all my product has passed, and Northern Health says I don't have to have an inspector or corporate kitchen. I don't see a reason why the District of Tumbler Ridge doesn't give me a business license. And especially when, you know, somebody, and I have their permission to bring that here. Actually, they would have come here if they would have been out of town. They have... They have been licensed in the District of Fort St. John for four years now, selling the... Well, actually, they sell a little bit less than me. They're into salsas, relishes, and pot pepper jellies, which actually my pickles are lower risk than even that. And that's everything I have for that. So I made sure that you all have everything, so that you can go back and check up all the sites tomorrow and check it all up.
Are you going to answer any questions, counsel?
What was that?
Are you available to answer any?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes, why were you turned down for a business license? Because it's classified as a higher risk.
Because I was told at Town Hall, when I came in, I was told at the front desk that there was no way I was allowed a business license, no matter what I sold for food, unless it came from a corporate inspected kitchen. Like, even, I'm going back to by law 644, I don't know if I'm allowed to do that, because I forgot to mention something. But it says right in there, if it's a low risk food, that it does not have to be inspected by Northern Health to be sold in the District of Tumbler Ridge.
Anybody else?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, April. You brought a good presentation for, gives us a lot to think about and why you're not getting a business license. And I think that's something we can look at as a counsel, is if it's a low risk food, why you're not getting the license for it. So I don't know if it was a Northern Health issue before, but if that's the law, that you don't need to have a commercial kitchen, I think it'll be something that counsel takes into consideration and along with all the other points made today.
I appreciate that. Like I say, I gave you several different government sites, so that it's not just one site showing you that I am actually the lowest risk there is on the market. And I wouldn't get into high risk. That involves a pressure canner and I'm terrified, so, you know.
Okay, well, I bought some of your stuff. I love it.
Actually, I personally was going to bring some of you what you buy. Daryl would have been beets, you were carrots, Joanna was spicy salsa, but I thought that might be a little tacky, so I didn't.
I was hoping.
Well, I got a jar of pickles in here. If you want it later, I'll slip it to you. By law 644 didn't pass, so I can still do that.
Okay, thank you very much. You did bring some very good information. Well done. Okay, five point two, Governor George M.P., you're welcome to the...
Do you guys bring any pickles? We brought stunning personality.
So, your worship, what I've come here for today is just to present kind of our year on staff, so we run our years, April till March. And just to present what we've kind of accomplished over the last year, based upon our objectives that we set last year and our objectives that we plan to do forward from here. So I'll start off and just talk a little bit about our attachment case load. In 2016 to 2017, we experienced eight hundred and twenty calls for service during that timeframe. And the year prior, we were up slightly at eight hundred and forty-seven calls for service. For resourcing, as of actually this Friday, we will be fully staffed for the first time in several years. That will be until Andrew ends up leaving. He, unfortunately for us, but fortunately for him, received a promotion and he's leaving us to Chetwind. So we will be fully staffed until he departs, at which point hopefully we have somebody in short. So as you know, we have been running short, we've been running up to forty percent vacancy for the past year, two years. So hopefully that trend is now at an end and we're able to be fully staffed for going forward. That's one of my primary objectives. So last month, we received Constable Tyler Rodney. He started working, he's been working here for about a month. And on this Friday, Constable Darren Gross arrives and he starts work this weekend. In the same, since January 2017 as well, we have also hired a victim services worker and two part-time guards at the detachment, which we rely on. So our staffing issues seem to be resolving, being resolved. Victim services, again, don't have much stats for them at this point because they just started recently. I'll speak on several of the points here that we were doing. Community policing. In November 2016, we implemented a crime reduction initiative, which included prolific offender manager management and curfew compliance checks. So probably at the time, I think we had three individuals who were on curfew, where they're required to be in the residence at certain times due to the types of offenses that they've occurred or committed, or that have been alleged committed. So part of our curfew compliance checks would again, regular checks on these individuals. As a result of these checks, one of the individuals accumulated numerous charges and ended up deciding to leave this community after incurring several charges. And we continue to monitor the people as they come and go, so that they don't come to Tumbler Ridge and kind of comply under the radar. And if they're here to comply with the rules, we want them here. If they're not here to comply with the rules, we want to hold them to task. So we've implemented that. And I'll now speak on the annual performance plan, which is kind of what we use as a metric to see how well we're doing throughout the year. So for last, for 2016 to 2017, the objectives that we set were crime reduction, violence against, violence and other persons offenses. And during this period, 2015, 2016, we had eighteen charges of domestic violence in Tumbler Ridge. During the same period for 2016 to 2017, that number fell to seven charges of domestic violence, which represents a sixty-two percent reduction in domestic violence, which I feel is as a result of diligent checks on the parts of the members when the finalization, make sure you act of follow-up with these individuals. And I think some of it is as well with continued monitoring, because typically these people will fall into several categories. So we're able to monitor them and make it known that we're paying attention, keeping the task, that that can help with that. Crime reduction, property mischief and other property crime. During this period in 2015, 2016, there were twelve reports of break and enter in Tumbler Ridge. During the same period of 2016, 2017, there were seven reports of break and enter in Tumbler Ridge area. And this again, represents a forty-two percent reduction in break managers in the community. Traffic impaired driving, speeding, ATBs, snowmobiles, et cetera. During this period in 2015, 2016, we conducted thirty road checks, had seventy traffic contacts, which include warnings, tickets, suspensions, and zero traffic projects were done in the Tumbler Ridge area. During the same period in 2016, 2017, we conducted nineteen road checks, which was a slight drop, but we did a hundred and twenty-eight traffic contacts and three traffic projects with other agencies. We did several road checks with CBSE, Commercial Vehicle Safety Enforcement, checking commercial vehicles, making sure that they had their brakes repped standard, that their logbooks were done correctly. So those have been done in the last six months or so. So overall, there's a thirty percent, thirty-seven percent reduction in our road checks. And I attribute quite a bit of that to being short-staffed. It's hard to do a road check when there's one person working. And with the increased staffing, I'm confident that will improve. But our traffic contacts went up by eighty-three percent and our road checks, I mean, went up an infinite amount. It's going from zero to an infinite amount, but three hundred percent for the purpose of this. And then for community engagement, the members are very active in the community and participating in pretty much any event that we're invited to, participating as long as it's appropriate. We've done presentations at schools. Unfortunately, we do not have any DARE trained members at the moment, so we've been unable to teach DARE over the last year or two. I have secured a seat in the upcoming DARE training program, which I believe takes place in August or September of this year. So I'm hoping to have somebody trained for the upcoming school year on that. So for the priorities for last year, I think we did fairly well. For the upcoming year, our priorities that we're going to set, and we're looking for feedback on that as well, is again, to target domestic violence and do anything that we can to better reduce that and keep it to the lowest level possible. Property crime and traffic, so impaired driving, speeding. And there's going to be a greater emphasis on recreational vehicles. We're hoping to do more patrols on the trails and do some checks that way. And community engagement, again, at schools, doing presentations. That's what I intend at this time.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you've had a chance to field this one yet, but so there's a lot of people in the community that were hoping that we were going to be able to get to the point where we're going to be able to take our recreational vehicles on a permit system through the RCMP from our home to a designated checkpoint. And this has bounced around with the RCMP as the members have bounced around here as well. And it's been something we've been looking to get resolved for a long time, that, you know, to help the members of the community, but also to help us promote tourism. Is there any talk or is there any level of communication happening at this point where you guys may be able to start issuing these permits? Or have any been issued yet?
I can speak to that. None have been issued as of yet. I've spoken with several people with the province that have advised me, and these are the people drafting the laws, that the intention of the law is not to allow people to travel on the roadway and use it as if they're a vehicle to get from point A to point B. The intention of the law is to allow people to cross the highway, so at ninety degree at the kind of the closest point available. So if you're crossing from one side of the road to the other, that's kind of what they're for. They're not so. If your house is two blocks from the trail, so you can drive along the road and duck into the trail. Now, if you're driving, if you're not driving on the road, you're driving a ditch or something else, that's a different question, I believe. But I've been advised that I don't really have the authority to issue those. The permits for issuing for driving along the roadways are for business purposes and stuff like that. Like if you're clearing driveways, we can issue a permit for the purpose of clearing driveways. You can kind of go do house number one, and you can go next door, go do house number three, and then house number five, and go along the road and do it that way. So you're going to have to trailer, drive it five feet and trailer it. But again, this is, this law is currently in the process of revisions and new drafts and they are taking feedback and input. So I have spoken directly with them and they are doing a few tests in communities for, I believe it's golf carts, with licensing and allowing them to be on the roadway and be operated and used in that purpose. But that, those studies are currently taking place on the coast and they haven't concluded yet. And I know that people will often bring up the Elford as an example. I spoke with the detachment commander of Elford as well. And I think one thing that we need to recognize too, is when Elford implemented that, their laws were different than they are today. So in some ways, they've been grandfathered a little bit. And in speaking with the detachment commander there, he says if he had his feedback today and they were trying to go down that path, he would not be supportive at all, because he says it's led to a variety of issues with people, a sense of entitlement, because they're now a generation on and people have a sense of entitlement that they shouldn't be allowed to drive on the roadway, whether they're licensed or not, because they see people driving on the roadway. So they think that you're allowed to, so they're inundated with complaints, both noise, vehicles traveling on the highway, a variety of issues. But I think the short version is, what I've been told is I can only issue them for crossing a highway at this point. Or if it's something like a bridge where it's the only passageway, so if there's a parcel of land on one side, parcel of land on the other, the only way across is the bridge or traveling thirty kilometers either direction, I can give the permit for the purpose of crossing that direction. But not for, not, I guess, not for convenience sake, just so you don't have to load it up. At least that's what I've been directed at this point. I will continue to follow up with it and if I get further input or I get given a different direction, I can definitely reassess from there.
And I guess the follow-up to that is, you know, what we go back to the residents with is to say that at this point, it's not going to happen unless the law changes. And we can continue to do the way that we've done it for the last forty years, which is push it down the street with the engine running, with the assistance of the motor. Is that still an okay way to do it? It's extremely dangerous and difficult, but...
It's not something that we are actively enforcing at this time. So we're not actively going out looking for people that are, you know, going along reasonably at a slow pace to go from one point A to point B. But that said, we are complaint-driven for the most part of our organization. So if we receive complaints, then of course we're going to have to take further actions in regards to that. And it's also based upon the community desires, right? But as for me issuing a permit that says you can drive from your house to the trail, at this point, I, from people that are much more knowledgeable on it than me, I've been advised that I can't really do that under the current laws. But again, it's still under revision.
I guess the, you know, the kind of part to that that we find a bit frustrating is that those that are going to break the law are going to break the law regardless. And these are people that are willing to go out and register, license the vehicle, tell you, this is the way I want to go. So you know who I am, so that if you see me drive down the road, you know, you don't have to pull me over. But to get rid of those guys that are, there are guys who zip up the road on their side-by-sides or quads and have no respect for anybody, are going to pile into a kid or something. And that's the kind of safety aspect that we'd like to try to figure out. But if there's any which way that our counsel can influence that at all, if there's anywhere you can direct us to, who we could contact to express our views, I'd appreciate if you could get us that information.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll buy Jordan or somebody else, whoever you designate there. I can buy them the information and the contact that I have in the community, because I know that they are in the process of drafting it. And I understand the concern there, but it's kind of, there's people, regardless of how you do it, there's going to be people that are there that push the boundaries and... It's just, it's more complicated than it might appear.
Okay, thanks.
Just to continue that we discussed before, having a meeting with the ATP club being an attempt at that. Talking about this, is that still on the table or?
Yeah, no, let's let me know when you'd like to do that.
Anything else?
Thank you, worship. Just a question with regards to a notice. And one of your priorities for 2017, 2018 is to obtain a riverboat, jet boat, for the summer of 2017 for patrols and checks in the area?
What that is, is we're looking at coming to an agreement, Tutson's Hope has a jet boat, which is used for patrols and we're trying to come, we're currently in talks and trying to find a way that we can get it up here for some time over the summer.
Sure, it's sort of thing.
Yeah, it won't be a permanent acquisition. That probably won't ever happen in this area. But we're trying to come up with an agreement where they can send us the jet boat, because it requires two jet boat operators. There's only three in the entire north. So we're coming up with an agreement with Andrew being one of them. And we're trying to come to an agreement where we give them him for a period of time and in exchange, they give us the jet boat and somebody else that, so we can do some patrols in this area over another period of time. That works. How successful, it's kind of out of my court. I can ask for the moon, but I'll get another story.
Thank you.
On that too, I told him in Fort St. John Taylor at that meeting that they enjoy much more running our river than theirs.
No, I don't think it's a lack of the members wanting to do it. It's all about releaseability and staffing loopholes and all that stuff. So I'm sure the guys there will be more than happy to come up here.
So I think it was last year, we had a, well, publicized event here in Tumbler Ridge of a house in Tumbler that was raided as a drug house. Something that we see in the news all the time is this opiate crisis that you hear of in Vancouver. And now the rumors are starting to circulate around Tumbler Ridge that we're getting into a similar situation. Can you comment on that at all? Are we into an opiate crisis in Tumbler Ridge or is something changed here that we need to know about?
I would probably have to defer that to, from our perspective, we don't get the calls for overdoses. If there's privacy rules, we used to get them. If there's privacy rules, we used to get them, we no longer do. So I don't have the statistics on how many overdoses are happening in the area. So we, because we are not advised them at all, anything we shape or form. That changed for fear of people not calling and people dying, because they're worried about police enforcement action. So I can't speak for the stats for that. In regards to the house that was discovered in November, at the time, it was, all the parties had already departed. And it appears that that was a transient group that has hit several areas, several communities in the area, and this was a sub-long way. So at this time, I can't, there's no evidence on our part that supports that from us, but from the medical community, there might be a different perspective with stats that we're allowed to have. Okay?
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you, worship. So just on that, I'm glad you spoke on the DARE program. I know we did have a constable that was in town that was partly trained, so it's good to see that you have a seat in that, because I think that's important in the schools right now in regards to the opiate crisis, because, you know, it's being leased with different things now. I mean, I'm not sure how much you're aware of it. I know we, we hear about it, we've seen reports, and we're seeing it anyways, but it's being, it's being definitely cut with different drugs. So it's good to see that DARE programs are working. Do you have an adult team that? I just want to first say thank you for anything you guys do for the community, your whole group, being understaffed and short-staffed, and how much your members, you know, working overtime and working by themselves. So thank you for me for sure, and in this community, what you guys do.
Thank you, worship. Just one more question that came to mind. Some years back, we had a Citizens on Patrol group of individuals and so forth, and working together with the RCMP that went through the later hours and the rest and so forth. In your opinion, is there an appetite for that? Is there a need for that, do you see, in terms of being able to assist in whatever?
I believe there might be an appetite. I'll have to speak forward with Rose on that. But there's some logistical hurdles that we have to overcome to get that rolling. As for the need in the community, since I arrived in October, there hasn't really been. But again, there could, that could change in the summer. Typically, summer, we get doubling or tripling in our volume. And it's also very dependent upon kind of the flavor of the day with the people that we have in town. Because if we get a group of people in town, it might be a crazy day. There's nothing going on there. As long as they're willing to have the boring needs to, it's all well and fine. So I can speak further with Rose, and we can set that up after, after we're done with your presentation.
So, Rose, you're handling that?
Yes.
That initiative?
We do have the society, if I may, your worship, please help us, but we do have the society cops are still in play. We have some volunteers that are out there on, on ad hoc basis at this time, as James has indicated. With the changeover of staff and things like that, there were certain documents that have expired, and until they're renewed and certain things are in place, we're not able to act as a Citizens on Patrol group as we had before. But that's in the working forward with James as well. And we do, we do still have a society in place, just ready to go when the ducks are in a row.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to touch on the DARE program, because I've been involved in it graduation over there. From the kids' part of you, they seem so proud, so when they get that piece of paper that says they graduated, so it'd be sure nice if you guys can get that back going.
No, I'm definitely hoping that occurs unless they pull it out from under me and I've got a seat secure for the next course. So I don't know about that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Great. Okay, 5.3 is Lions Club. Walking up to the table.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight representing the Lions Club to ask for a proclamation of Lions International Week in honor of our 100th anniversary of serving others worldwide. A little bit of history, on June the 7th, 1917, Melvin Jones, a businessman in Chicago, held the first international Lions meeting. Along with our mandate, we serve, Lions International is in 210 countries around the world. That's 46,000 clubs with over 1.4 million volunteers. Here in Tumbler Ridge alone, our little club has now 37 members, so that's a lot of volunteer hours. A few of the many programs that the Lions participate in internationally is a collection of old eyeglasses. We recycle them and we provide them to underprivileged nations. If they're broken, they recycle them and they use the parts they can in meltdown, or they use the glass to recycle into new frames. Alum tabs from your cans go to make wheelchairs. Donations to support dog guides for the vision impaired and numerous other programs. We are here tonight to request a view to help us celebrate our 100th anniversary by flying the Lions International play for the week of June 5th to June 9th. We are also requesting permission to set up our tent and to barbecue here on the steps of Town Hall on June the 7th, from 11 till 1:00 p.m. for the community, free hot dogs and cake in honor of this milestone. And finally, for permission to advertise to the community on the electric billboard, or electronic billboard, at the community center and also on the calendar of events that's just posted outside the community center. That's just what we are requesting for this evening. Thank you for your time.
I've got one little addition to that request of council and the town is myself and my wife are very proud of this, and we are going to Chicago for the 100th anniversary convention. I was wondering if there's any pins or paraphernalia that we can take to promote our town to Lions members throughout the world.
When does that happen?
That's, we leave on June, or June the 30th. Well, we leave June 28th. It's June 30th to July the 4th in Chicago.
Make any decisions?
Yeah, well, no, I realize, I just wanted to bring that before.
Sure, look into that. I'm sure we can.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make that proclamation. If you appreciate that. Whereas on June 7th, 2017, Lions International marks 100 years of service to the communities that benefit millions of recipients worldwide. Whereas Tumbler Ridge, Lions Club has been serving our community for more than 30 years. Whereas we are honored to recognize the Lions International and the Tumbler Ridge Lions Club for their thousands of hours of dedicated service and exemplary contribution to many people they assist through their fundraising efforts. Therefore, I, Don McPherson, Mayor of Tumbler Ridge, do hereby proclaim the week of June 4th to 10th, 2017 as Lions International Week in Tumbler Ridge.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, the Lions Club does so much in this town, and it's an honor to do this.
Well, we're very honored to be in this town, and as, I don't know if you know, but we're one of the only towns that have a Lions organization in the Peace Country. It's only us and Tutson Hope. There's not, Tutson, St. John, not Chatlin, we play ball football and stuff.
I'm glad we got you. And anything else from council? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
It's already open on the bottom there.
Okay. Think I can handle it. Hi, worship, council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. It's quite short in this. I'm here today to give a little bit of an update on the old visitor center status that I've been working on since I presented to you last about permission to talk to your staff about use of the facility in the surrounding area. So, just going to do it here. There we go. Okay, so we started looking at it, and just sitting down with Boyd to see where we were at, we had a building inspection done, just to see what the existing structure is looking like. And I'm sure Boyd can provide the numbers to you at some point, but it looks like the building inspector came back with just to occupy the premises, not to beautify it, but just to make it safe for occupation. The amount that was quoted by the building inspector was higher than the value of replacing the building at this time. Now, I know that Jordan has asked for, and Jordan and Boyd have both been working quite diligently on getting a second opinion, but as you know, it's sometimes difficult to get people to come. They want to add up all of their calls, so they can do multiple ones when they're here. So the building inspectors they've reached out to from outside the community may come at some point soon, but we haven't been able to get one in a timely fashion. So that's what we're working with, and I've been looking, of course, as I remind everyone all the time at my revalidation in 2018, our revalidation, I should note. And so I've also been looking at the grants that are available. And on May 31st, there's a, there's a third date for the VCR World Dividend Fund. That's the fund that I accessed for $110,000 for education programming and a few other projects that I'm undergoing right now. So I looked at this opportunity, and one of the things that I'd like to talk to you about tonight is the idea of partnering with the District of Tumbler Ridge to actually replace the structure that's there. I think that you're still working on getting, the staff is still looking on getting that second opinion, so it's certainly not a done deal, but day 31st is approaching really quickly, which is why I asked if I could present tonight. So refurbish the existing building is an option. I'm also applying at the same time for a VC gaming grant to cover a lot of our operational costs. And in that gaming grant, you can actually apply for up to $20,000 of capital funds. And for gaming, it's easy to use in-pine services and other funding to match funds. So we would pretty much just get that $20,000 if successful, of course, that we could apply towards that. So that's one option right now. However, I would say that the amount's just to occupy and not to beautify or make space, you know, a geopark space, if you will, you know, just to occupy it is more than three times that amount. Option number two, rebuild a permanent structure if that structure is really found to be not in good repair. This is something that I think would take a lot more discussion, but it would just be replacing what you have right now. So I'm just throwing that out there. Option number three would be to build a semi-mobile structure. We wouldn't put a mobile home there, but the idea being it looks somewhat permanent, but it could be moved relatively shortly. So something that I think if the council were to go for something like that, you could be assured that you don't have to worry about getting rid of us and our building, you just have to get rid of us at some point. And then obviously, my personal favorite, option number four, Build a Tiny House Meets Mobile Museum GeoOverage Center. And I'm certainly over to any of the options. I'd just like to point that I'm smiling at option four. So Parks Canada has created a mini-mobile visitor information stand, and actually, Fort Nelson has created a mini-mobile visitor stand for their visitor center as well. What they've done is, in Fort Nelson, I asked them for pictures, but they just couldn't get it to me in time. And so they've taken an old 1960s trailer and refurbished it, and they have simple brochures of a similar size to this one here that they put at the aired provincial parks, so that they, you know, maximize on people stopping in and then get that extra chance to stop in town. What I'm thinking of is bigger than this. It would be closer to the size of the structure that's there right now. But it just kind of gives you an idea of what other people have done. So I threw up just a few examples. This one, they've got the mobile dairy. You know, this is, Google will come up with everything. But it just shows you the versatility, that they've actually got a cow that comes to any group that they want, and students can actually milk the cow, they have a little pumping system involved. And then their pop-house section is a tent that has a calf that you can feed. So I mean, it really shows, I think, that your limit is your imagination in this one, right? Here's a few examples up here on the left and down below of the interior of some mobile centers that other people have created. I don't know if you can see them that well, but you can see that they're more than just card racks. This is something that includes a lot of transportation. And then this one on the right here, the kind of RV, this is a custom-built RV that I'll show you a few more slides on. So this is what they've done here, University of Iowa museum. So this is a custom-built RV, and they built in a wheelchair lift, so it's accessible wherever they go. They've got displays on history, paleontology, and archaeology. So you can see here, they've got a little divider, and on one side, they've got paleontology. Maybe not everyone sees this. I'm an archaeologist, so I see this. And on this side, it's clearly archaeology. So you've got the arrowheads, and then you've got the diamond boats on this side. And then they've also included their local cultural history. And then they've created a few interactive displays that, this is the University of Iowa, so that they put up their new research there, and they keep a current feed going. When I thought about a mobile mini-display, I wasn't necessarily thinking of the bus, but when I Googled it, that's, these are the examples that came up. So what I was thinking of is something more like the tiny house. So what I was picturing is something that looks like a structure when it's there, but that you can take to outreach events around the region, such as the High on Ice Carving Festival in Fort St. John, or the Chainsaw Carving. So I just drew up a few examples. What I like about these is that you can use, I like the hot tub, obviously, but I put the hot tub in there just to show the diversity of what you can create. I like that we could look at using some regionally sourced timber. We can make this really a Tumbler Ridge type idea. I'd probably be looking at something with a little loft to maximize space. I don't, I've never designed a tiny house, so work with me on this. This was a fun Google trip. My personal favorite, you know, what I like about this is it's got a small docking station. If you see here, here's the hitch, but it looks like an actual structure, so you can pull it pretty easily. The geopark doesn't have a truck, and I'm not asking you for a truck, but that might be somewhere where a partnership could work, where, you know, with the right drivers abstract and whatever processes, your staff could either work with district staff or get permission to drive a truck that would pull the geo-interpretive center. Something like this in our community, as I said, we could use local wood. Other partners for me is looking at, we have a really strong renewable sector here, such as the MECO, the Quality Wind Project. So maybe we use this as an example of sustainable energy use and get a turbine on there to power it, or solar panels. Some of the wind energy developers in the region also have solar projects. So this is something that I think would be, you know, really, really useful. And then, of course, it's on a steel frame, and what does Tumbler Ridge do best? We do metallurgical coal. So the actual construction of the structure would be, you know, could easily be our strongest industry. So it's not just about tourism, it's about who is telling. Then if you build, and of course, this is all hypothetical, but you could put a bigger platform, not just a small deck, so that you've got some interpretive things, room for pop-up markets. When the, when the geocenter is gone, then you can, someone can move their food truck in or whatever, but make it a potentially multipurpose space. So you create an attractive place to park it where their current Olympic is, and then, you know, it can be used while it's gone. So as I said, potential partners, I've reached out to Donna Mary, she was here earlier, but she's left. And so she's put me in touch, Northern Lights College with their Fort St. John campus, to look at the construction class. So that could be a main kind donation to get them to actually build the trailer mini-geocenter for us. You know, the community for us, again, looking at timber. I know that right now, our timber leaves the community, but I throw one off kind of cool project. actually build the trailer mini-geocenter for us. You know, the community for us, again, looking at timber. I know that right now, our timber leaves the community, but I throw one off kind of cool project. I'm sure there's someone with a timber mill around here that we could find. And, you know, including the forest generation sample and interpretive displays. Again, as I said, the renewables industry and the mining industry. So, just let's make it a real Tumbler Ridge facility. And so, basically, I think there's two... There's two different streams that I can apply through. There's the single... The single-person applicant stream that's up to $100,000, or there's a partnership stream, which is up to $500,000. If both the District of Tumbler Ridge and the Global Geopark are eligible communities, partner... Eligible partners? So, we could actually just the District of Tumbler Ridge and the Global Geopark, put an application in. Of course, we can include Northern Lights College as a supporter. I would think we would want to go to NBIT for things like cultural spaces funding. Of that, in the $100,000 single applicant, you have to provide... It's up to $100,000 that you get, so the budget could be up to $20,000. You get... You have to do 20% of your funding and money yourself. On the partnership application, you have to fund up to 40%, so you can get up to $500,000. Then, you have to find the rest of it. When... And of that amount, 10% can be in-kind. So, for me, the value of the location of that land would probably, you know, on a one or two-year, three-year lease, whatever it would be, I think would probably easily cover that 10%. But, you know, we could look at the cost of removal of the current building and site prep. I'm not really sure. Boyd's probably, like, rolling his eyes right now, but he's on my board, so I can answer that. Anyway, so this is by May 31st that we have to apply. I have a grant writer who has said that she has time to do this and work with us on the budget, and she was successful in the only two other applications for the rural dividend in previous intakes. The only two partnership applications that have been successful were two that she wrote, so she's done these before, and she was really excited about it. Other ideas for a partnership application include, you know, a really nice display at the Fort St. John Airport above the geopark and in other communities like Dawson Creek, because it's some key locations that we work with on those communities to set up. And I think in the funds that are available there, that we could find enough partners to make it a really good project. So, that's all I have to say. I have many questions, probably quite a few that I can answer.
Yeah, well, thank you, Council. Sure.
Thank you, Your Worship. It sounds exciting. It seems like there's so many different aspects to go down. So, in that... An application, do you have to be site-specific, and do you have to have all the size of the building and everything nailed down by May 31st?
No.
Okay, so you just have to...
You have to have the concept. You would be applying for the project development, which is another $10,000, where you actually hire someone to develop the project further. So, for example, with my previous successful application, we got $10,000 of project development and $100,000 to do it. So, right now, I have an education consultant who knows a lot more about education than I do, actually creating a plan of how we're going to spend the other $100,000. So, we come up with the idea. We say we're going to need approximately, you know, $100,000 in materials and labor to build the structure. Then, we want another $100,000 for interpretive displays. We're going to need to prep a lot about this much. So, it's all very kind of high-level, but we don't need to have plans. That all happens as a part of the project. Timelines, we adhere around September, September to October in my experience. And then, you have usually a year to complete it, although you can request for extensions if something comes up. So, when you said the site-specific lot, you know, that's kind of what's nice about this is I know that a lot of people have looked at that location, is if the old dig wasn't there, what would it be? I think we have a good idea for how to use it right now, but if in the future it changed, you know, and then we take down our signs and wheel away our trailer, it's still a useful trailer for outreach and possibly putting it at Monceman Park for a few days or Willem or wherever, science fairs.
Anybody else? I think it's a great idea in a way that the geopark is... It's Tumbler Ridge's, but it's also regional. If we get out to these other communities, I think it's a really good idea and something even the regional... Looking at... May 31st, that's coming very quick.
Yeah, so what we need for May 31st is, I think council would need to approve going in as a partnership, like directing staff, that they can work with me on that budget. I don't know if you need to set a budget that you're... I'm not sure if council needs to set a budget. It's up to $500,000. I don't think we need to hold $500,000. But basically, I just need, you know, council's blessing to go ahead with it. I don't know if... I'm sure staff has their own comments to make on that one. So, I can put together... It's a very high-level, simple application process, so I can easily draft something. It would be, you know, 50/50, so district staff would have it equal, say, drafting the document and getting it in. So, I guess this is probably the last opportunity to get approval from council, go forward with the application before then. So, that's what I need from you guys, and it would be up to you if you're comfortable with us running with it.
Thank you, Council, Your Worship. So, from the... Excuse me. From the proposal that we've heard, basically, the geoparks asking for council's approval to make this grant application. I can tell you that staff won't be involved, other than giving information that they need to construct this. This would be the geoparks project. Because council gives approval for the grant application to go through does not mean you be giving approval for the project to happen. There's no funds attached to this, which there's going to need to be, no matter what happens on this. Council's going to have to approve funds to that, whether or not that's removing the old visitor center or putting the land as the in-kind, however that looks like. So, there are a lot of unknowns at this point. It's whether or not council feels comfortable moving forward. If this intake deadline is missed, it's missed. So, it's up to council whether or not you want to go forward now and say, "We'll get the answers at a later date," or you may not be comfortable moving forward. Now, that's up to you. Just to clarify a little bit on the status of the old visitor center, so it is what we've known it is. That building is old, and it's going to get to the point soon where it needs major renovations to keep up. A lot of the structural deficiencies that are there right now are just the way it was built. It wasn't built properly. So, putting money into that building is really the question that staff is trying to figure out. Is it worth trying to keep that building up going long-term forward, or is it just sinking money into a pit? And that's something we don't have an answer yet, and we won't until we're able to get somebody in who can help us determine that. So, the best I can give you is that there's a lot of unanswered questions right now, and I can't really give council any recommendation on how you want to proceed. It comes down to, do you want to try and take this opportunity for the grant to go in and make the decisions later, or is there too much uncertainty to proceed? Counsel, Kate, do you have something?
Thank you, Worship. From my perspective, I don't have a problem with continuing on with the process and so forth, and it just strikes me that... When I think about the building now that is available and so forth, it's going to be expensive to do it. It just strikes me when looking at the other options and so forth, that they just seem temporary. I mean, I think about the visitor information center. It's a beautiful building and so forth, and if we're going to add to that, that experience and so forth, it just strikes me that a similar or type of structure, permanent and so forth, that can't be moved. I mean, that can be another project, going to trade fairs or whatever. But it just strikes me that if we're going to keep sort of in that mode, let's do a first-class job on it, spend the money that's necessary to do that without being silly, but have that along the same lines perhaps as a V.I.C. or something that fits into that same sort of style. That certainly would be my preference. But moving ahead on it, I think it would be a welcome addition to Tumbler Ridge and something that fits in with all of the discussions we've had relative to tourism and so forth. But it just seems permanent, as opposed to the rest of my opinion, it seemed temporary. So, thank you, Worship.
We don't normally make decisions during the delegation thing here. Either way, I can bring this back into the meeting here and discuss it there, and council can think about it at that time. And because we don't have another meeting, unless I call a special meeting, I guess, but if we can do it today, then run today.
That would be... You'd need unanimous consent of council to introduce that motion. So, it would be up to council whether or not that would be allowed to be introduced. You, as the mayor, can schedule a special meeting anytime you like, as long as 24 hours ago this is given to the public. But if you wanted to deal with it in the meeting today, you need unanimous consent from council to bring the motion.
That'd come at notice of motions.
You can do that, notice of motion. You can do it in council's business. You could bring it whenever you like, as long as council gives you the blessing to do so.
I'll bring it up, and we'll see what council feels later on. Okay, thank you.
Can I just say one more thing, just for clarity? It's not dependent on using that corner block space. I mean, I think it's replacing one with the other, but if we had a mobile center, it could go other places. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does council want a break now before we carry on?
I'm good, Doctor. Thank you.
Okay, correspondence. 6.1 H.D. Mining International. I'd see this for discussion, so I'll start it off. We had a meeting the other day with... Actually, this is coming up. Oh, this could be the information. It is coming up later for those motions, so I'll address it at that point.
Anybody want to make a motion here of information or discussion?
Discussion?
Okay.
And just, is there any plan to meet with the person in this letter?
Yes, we talked to Mr. Wall this morning, and he's... I think you're setting it up.
Okay. We've reached out to their office to try and set up a date. They haven't got back to us, but hopefully they will, and they'll do so. And the intention of that meeting is to find out why they think that an underground gold mine is going to affect the caribou habitat near it? I believe it would be to, if I understand the mayor's desire correctly, would be to advocate for the project's approval, yes. Anybody else?
Hey. Move on to 6.2. Glen Lake Provincial Park.
Discussion?
Kate, go ahead.
We selected a date for when we're going to meet with them out at Glen Lake Park. Again, on this one, we're waiting for them to get back to us, and then it shouldn't be too long. I believe the person we're trying to meet with has been out on vacation for the past week, so hopefully, now that he's back in the office, we will have a date soon. And I know there was an email floating around. We talked about discussing this in a PBC meeting. Is that... Is this the opportunity to do that now, or is there another meeting coming? Probably not, right? Is it on? I believe it's on today, Counsel. Oh, sorry. Good enough. 9.1, yes. Good enough. Wait for it then.
Anything else? Okay, move on to 6.3. Prime Corps Budget, 2016-2017 Annual Report. Counsel Kirby?
Most fair information.
Okay, secondaire. Okay, bylaws. On Sately Premises Amendment Bylaw Number 652-2017. Three recommendations there. Counsel Kirby?
Recommendation number one, that the District of Tumbler Ridge on Sately Premises Amendment Bylaw Number 652-2017 be read a first time.
Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number two. Counsel McGee? The District of Tumbler Ridge on Sately Premises Amendment Bylaw Number 652-2017 be read a second time. Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number three. Counsel Casey?
Dr. District of Tumbler Ridge on Sately Premises Amendment Bylaw Number 652-2017 be read a third time.
Secondaire. Counsel McGee? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, on 7.2, Traffic and Highways Regulation Amendment. Three recommendations there.
Counsel, off. Recommendation one, that the District of Tumbler Ridge Traffic and Highway Regulation Amendment Bylaw Number 653-2017 be read a first time.
Secondaire. Counsel Kirby? Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number two. Counsel, off.
The District of Tumbler Ridge Traffic and Highway Regulation Amendment Bylaw Number 652-2017 be read a second time.
Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number three. Counsel, off.
The District of Tumbler Ridge Traffic and Highways Regulation Amendment Bylaw Number 653-2017 be read a third time.
Discussion? All in favor? 7.3 Municipal Ticketing Amendment Bylaw Number 654-2017. Three recommendations there. Counsel Casey?
Dr. District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticketing Information Amendment Bylaw Number 654-2017 be read for a first time.
Secondaire, Counsel, off. Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number two. Counsel McGee?
The District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticketing Information Amendment Bylaw Number 654-2017 be read a second time.
Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? Recommendation number three. Counsel Kirby?
The District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticketing Information Amendment Bylaw Number 654-2017 be read a third time.
Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? New business, use of... And lots of one. And the Tumbler Ridge Fire Department. Information and discussion. Counsel, agree. Discussion? Secondaire.
Mr. Wall, we're looking for a recommendation for it to be approved.
It's in here for information. This is something that admin can bring in ourselves. If council doesn't want it, you can tell us no, but it's here for information.
Just want to initiate a motion. It's all about patient care. If anybody's... We talked about COVID prices earlier, so... So, we are seeing issues in Tumbler Ridge with the windows, and the fastest that you can administer this with an open airway, it helps. As soon as everybody's personnel are in contact with certain stuff, it helps them as well. Or if Amazon's guy gets it, and there's a fire guy there, hopefully, he's it on us. It's an important tool right now.
And just for clarification, my understanding, it's provided by the provincial government. It's not something that we have to buy, right? I'm not sure.
The operating budget, or my operating budget, will cover the cost of it. It's something we often buy. It's an 18-month shelf life on it, but it's something that we're going to be going through a lot of, this 80 cents from wild, it's very, very cost-effective.
8.2 Canada Day celebrations. Recommendation there? Counsel, agree.
Recommendation, that council approves closure of Front Street for Canada Day celebration July 1st, 2017, as per the map included at X.A., and that council approves street vendors... street vendors on district property during the day event.
Discussion on that?
Sorry, just one thing. I know we made the thing with Chetlin that we're going to make sure there were a hundred and fifty people there with pictures and stuff, so.
I thought for a hundred and fiftieth birthday, maybe we should be doing something. Counselor, anybody who wants to talk or something, maybe we should stand somewhere. They want to listen to us, but we should come up with something. It's a bit of a celebration, I think.
Absolutely.
So maybe we can discuss it at MP. We got time for that? Yeah. Maybe discuss it. Bad idea. Maybe no way to be here. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay. Eight point three. Oh, all in favor? Sorry. Eight point three, export installed for training. Recommendation there? Counselor Casey.
Thank you, worship. The council approves for inclusion in capital project for two thousand and eighteen. The installation of a sport flooring in the curling club ice surface in order to permit the extent extension of usage of the facility. The council supports grant application through N D I T to support the anticipated capital cost of fifty thousand dollars for the purchase and initial training of install.
Secondaire, Counselor. Okay. Discussion on that? I think anything that gives us more use out of our rec center is something worth looking at. I'm in favor of some of this type of thing. Okay, all in favor of that? Eight point four. Recommendation? Counselor Casey.
Thank you, worship. Recommendation that council approves for the inclusion in capital project for two thousand and eighteen to extend the Tumbler Ridge Golf and Country Club into a multi-purpose facility with the installation of a disc golf park and ultimate sports field, and that council supports a grant application for grant funding through N B I T to support the anticipated capital cost of twenty five thousand dollars for the purchase and install.
Secondaire. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, eight point five, summer play escape program. Recommendation?
The council supports the offering of the budgeted pilot program for the launch of the summer play escape program for children ages five to twelve and for the district review with implementation of parts two and three of the escape, the play escape, play school and play around town in two thousand and eighteen as part of the two thousand and eighteen budget deliberation.
Secondaire. Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Eight point six, grant application for the waste removal truck and carts. Recommendation?
The council approved an application by the district for grant from the federal gas tax strategic priorities fund in the amount of four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars for the purchase of the waste removal truck and waste removal carts.
Secondaire. Discussion? Counselor.
So just, just I think it's a great idea if we can get it paid for, but my question maybe comes in with all these grants and stuff like that that we that we go through. This one here, we've already approved the funding to do it. Well, once the budget passes, it's approved. And if we don't get the grant, it still goes ahead. Is that the same as the other ones like we approve, if we were to approve the other flooring for the curling arena as well? Like if we approved that we won't, that if we did it through a grant, we'll go for it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we will if we don't get the grant?
Yeah, we just are approving, applying for the grant. If we don't get it, that doesn't mean we're approved to go ahead with the project. Okay. We look at it. And on these ones here, we've already approved to spend the money and this is really, really nice to get it back.
For sure?
Yeah. Okay. As well, that was what you were going to say. Okay, all in favor? Okay, and for the paving, eight point seven, recommendation. Counselor McKay.
The council approved an application by the district for a grant of federal tax, gas tax strategic priority plan in the amount of two million dollars for the two thousand seventeen capital project.
Counselor Howe. Discussion? This would be just even nicer. All in favor? Eight point eight, Tumbler Ridge Secondary School Gold Cart Race. Recommendation? Counselor Kirby.
The council approve a road closure for the Tumbler Ridge Secondary School Gold Cart Race being held on May eighteenth, nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen as follows. South gate from Front Street to Muckman Way on May eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, starting at four P M and May nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, starting at three thirty P M.
Secondaire. Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Eight point nine, N D I T request, Mr. Wall, can you handle that?
Thank you, worship. It's just a request for more grant funding. We hoped N D I T would accept that council approved the project is enough. They've said no, they want you guys to specifically endorse this grant application. So that's been on table report that just came in.
Counselor Casey.
I'd like to make a recommendation, your worship. That the District of Tumbler Ridge supports the application to the Northern Development Initiative Trust for a Community Hails and Recreation Facilities Grant, an amount of thirty thousand dollars to fund stage one and stage two of the life cycle maintenance strategy for the upgrade of the pool operating systems specific to pool disinfection from the Northeast Regional Development Account.
Secondaire. Any discussion on that? I just want to say that we've been pushing to try and take advantage of as many of these grants as we can, and it's nice to see a whole bunch of them. Thanks. All in favor? Moves us to the speaker plan. Is there anything on there, Mr. Wall?
Other than I will make sure for the June, I believe June nineteenth, the strategic priorities meeting, have the strategic plan update for that meeting for council.
Anything else on that? General needs. Anything to add or subtract? Mr. Wall?
I've just got a question for council. With council like wanting all of council to be involved in the asset management committee meetings and then the lack of attendance at the first one, we've started just kind of putting, for example, today we had those two reports that maybe went to the asset management. We've started putting them into the regular agendas. Does council want to continue having specific asset management meetings or do you want us to bring these reports just into the regular council meetings?
Yeah, I know I didn't make the last one, which is a town, but I think asset management separate meetings are important. I was in the committee of the committee, and I think it's important.
I like the way you're doing it right now because we're all getting that information out, but I'd like to have, I don't know how many here, but we should have some asset management. I'd really like to keep that committee alive and I know we did a lot this year, but it's kind of got a whole bunch left. I've been going into budget time, but probably when we'll be looking at it again. Anybody else got anything? Sam, that? So you want it?
Yeah.
Okay, election priorities committee, the Willam Lake Park meeting, discussion. Counselor Howe, do you want to start that?
Yeah, so more or less I sent you guys all an email with some thoughts of what we can discuss when a person in the province shows up. And you know, basically that revolves around having a separate area to launch boats and then a separate area to tie them off overnight and that those would be designated as that so that it's a little easier at the boat launch. And then painting lines in the parking lot on a diagonal so that we actually get more boats in that area. If it was painted in there, it'd be easier to do. Expanding a gravel overflow parking lot that's almost in place there right now, we just need a little bit of tiddling up. And the other thing was looking at having it so it's a winter access. Either utilize that road for winter access or give us another winter access, perhaps the old access down in Willam Lake. So those were the four things that I had discussed or talked about that, you know, I don't know if we want to put them together on paper when we go to talk to them and so that we're all on the same page, but those were the few of the things I thought were important to address and so.
Counselor McKay, you had you had something you were talking about.
Yeah, I just wonder what just how what kind of scope we want to have on this. Do you want to go in there with a whole bunch of stuff and I mean that's, I mean, that could be problematic, but one thing that I know everybody at camps are would like to see some kind of an upgrade to washrooms and maybe even a shower. That don't have the facilities, but I know that as long as Willam Lake has been there, the shower issue has always been there amongst campers that use it regularly.
Thank you, worship. I know I think this all started just with residential residents complaining about year round access that we can't get, we can't launch a boat onto that lake and that's the only spot too. I know we've talked about recreation sites like cabins, et cetera, but I think maybe Counselor McKay is right in not having too much to go in, but absolutely the boat launch, the boat, the boat launches is damaging boats out there at certain levels. Unless you have a riverboat. No, I'm excited that we got that we're having this meeting and once we get the date, when we can invite Chetlin also to participate.
I've mentioned it, Chetlin and the area rep, Dan Rose, and they're interested.
So then like with with the way the park works, you're only allowed to have so many campers vehicles within your stall or you get charged for additional cars. What ends up happening is people park all the way around the park and and it's difficult for kids to access and that's the type of stuff that we can go to the province with and explain to them that if there's a gravel overflow parking where people could go through, that works good. What ends up happening is people go out to the paved parking where the boats are supposed to, boats and trailers are supposed to park, and they park with just a little simple car and take up four spots where boats could get in. And so th- these are the type of things that we can kind of walk them around. They're they're not there all the time to see the the problems that go along with it, but having an additional area, gravel pad where, you know, the stuff can go to, it makes it makes a pile of sense in my mind. And you know, the the whole problem with leaving the boats, if you don't have a riverboat, you can't leave it tied off to the dock because there's really only about three spots that you could park on that dock. So what happens at the end of the day is everybody backs their boats in, loads their their boats on and then pulls it all out and then again litters that parking lot up. If you loaded your boat and you're there for the weekend, you could take it to the overflow parking, the other park could be used for day use or something. So there's some real opportunities there. And when we had that big flood, it created a decent sized area there. I don't know if it could be expanded to work, but that's kind of the the thought process I had around it, so.
I would think if we could all get through this, see Mr. Wall and state out our concerns that we'd like to see addressed. Get it written down and back back to all of us so we all know what's going on and maybe Chetlin and to Dan Rose, area director. So we're all on the same page and we just stop to talk to these. And I, and that idea of cabins, you know, I don't see why Willam Lake can have cabins. And I think if we had addressed it with them, it's just how do we, how do we go about trying to promote this idea of having cabins out there? Because I think, well, you're the first person to mention it to me and I think it's a really good idea and it's just, the lakes have cabins on them, why wouldn't that be something for the residents?
Yeah, and then maybe another point that we could look at, I don't know if there's any idea if we can do this at all, but they've now installed some type of communications line that's gone past the park that is for the Meagle project. So I don't know if there's any possibility that we could somehow utilize that through the government or access that and have some type of communications able out of Willam Lake because there is no cell service out there. I don't know if there's some type of booster that they could use off of that, but that would be also something that would be interesting if we could have that conversation between them and maybe Meagle as well.
Okay, anything else on that? Got what you need, Mr. Wall?
Counselor's going to provide me with what they want in this.
Yeah.
Okay, notice of motions. First, first one is West Mobile Letter of Support. We had a meeting with West Mobile down here. You know, many of us were in attendance, but they did say that they they don't have an objection to longwall underground mining. And they felt short of saying that it was a letter of support, but we never really asked for it yet at that meeting. But I would like to write them a letter and ask for a letter of support. And since you're a letter of support for HD Mining Project, I would like to have a letter of support for longwall underground mining and the effect it has on the Caribou habitat. Because that that does the same thing. I don't know if West Mo and HD, how long they get along together, I know there's been issues in the past, so I just think if we keep HD Mining out of there and just talk about that type of mining in this area and then it's a bonus for Caribou habitat, the way we've been doing things, so that's what I'd like to send, send to West Mobile. Counselor McKay, make a motion. Here. Okay. Secondaire. Is there a secondaire?
Just wondering why we always stop with West Mobile, why we don't extend the same letter to Soto, Cloud Lake, and perhaps even Kelly Lake?
We have been going to go see, they just had elections in Soto and there's a new chief and stuff there. Mr. Wall is working on setting up a meeting with us and so we can, we've never met with him, so you're right, I don't know why we don't. We did, we did address this issue with West Mobile, so that's what I thought we could get a letter from.
Yeah, and I have no objection to supporting the letters to West Mobile, but I just think we should include the other First Nation groups in the area and their traditional lands do overlap this area. You know, power and numbers, if you had all three of them support, it's going to help you a lot more. You may only get one support, but you know, to me, I think we should be sending out to all three.
There, we could do that and it's probably a good idea. We haven't talked to them about it, but we're going with this. I think, I think it's a good idea. We send it out to all three, but we can, we'll have, I think, a better chance with West Mobile. Cloud Lake, they are very, they're very industrial, they're First Nation group and I think that they would be impact on a lot of this stuff, so.
Especially if we start including them on stuff like this that, I don't know, this is going on in their backyard and they may not even be aware or realize that we're trying to push for it. It's just the courtesy to send a letter to say that we're looking for their support.
Okay, motion. All in favor? Okay, ten point two. Counselor McKay. Yeah, the, this is also through the V C Rural Dividend Fund.
Yeah, the, this is also through the, the BC Rural Dividend Fund and there's quite a bunch, there's quite a few grants available for different things. Walking trails definitely is high on the agenda and we had originally, we had to kind of recraft this because it was originally intended to be a partnership agreement between the District of Tumble Ridge and the Community Forest. Unfortunately, you can't do that because if one entity is owned part or fully by the other, then it's pretty difficult to do that. So we, we have a few others that we're looking at partnering with. The Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society would be one of them. School District 59, we're a little bit of a question mark on that. And we've also, we've also talked to quite a few of the groups in town regarding just support for it. And we've got a lot of support from the GeoPark ATV, from Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society and the school definitely is fully on board with this. So it's something, and the, the money's there. And what, Tumble Ridge kind of rings all the bells in obtaining these grants because it's, it's, what, what is geared towards is communities that have a unique challenge that when the, the main resource, especially resource-based towns like what we are, something that goes, it's kind of to move you on the way of diversification. So we think we've got a pretty good shot at it. And again, it's the, it's the 80/20 split. So this is a, this is a, this a motion here is to get a $5,000 kind of allowance, if you want to call that, to, to work with urban systems who have done this before. In fact, you know, they feel pretty, those guys, they, they feel that with the district in this area, we have a very strong application on this. And it's something that we've talked about for, for two, three years now. And, and also by the way, the, if we decide to put in a viewing platform, that's, that's covered too, so we can do the whole thing and, and use grant application. So the, the initial is the seed money to investigate it. It also has to be at midnight on May 31st, so time is a bit of an essence in this, so. And, but at least we can, in a short period of time, we can get feasibility of the costs and then talk about that.
Councilor Kirby.
Thank you, worship. I'm, I'm in support of the, of the interpretive trail. What I'm concerned about is how, is in our strategic planning session, we will be talking about that whole area as a whole. And if, if we were to vote for this, we still have the option to plan how it's going to be implemented and how it'll work if, if we decide to develop that area? Or is this something that goes and is done as a standalone, alone project?
No, it, it could be implemented to whatever, whatever plan, that piece that should happen. The, the trail is there. I mean, it's already, I mean, it's, I don't know why you would mess all them up with it, but, but it is there and it's, but yeah, whatever, whatever we decide to do, it's getting the grant, getting the grant in before the 31st. After that, we can, we can do the plan.
Yeah, so just on, I was just looking through on sheet there. So that's my concern too, that, because on here it's trails that was out. Just want to make sure that we're not jumping the guns there when we talk about how we're going to all sit down and throw ideas around the table in regards to the interpretive trail that was discussed over behind the Vic Center. We're not just already trying to pre-plan something before we all have some input on it with the whole thought process on it. There's some picnic areas in behind the Vic Center with the viewing platform. I know the fish pond's been thrown out there, dog park's been thrown out there, camping stalls been thrown out there. So I just want to make sure we're not approving, we're going to be having this 5,000, have urban system design a plan or enter for those trails that are already there and just better them up and then not having a saving council when we have this meeting. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm just curious what that means.
At the end of the day, we can gay or nay, that's all. Bottom line is, it's something that has been on front of us for quite some time. The grants, the grants there. So however we decide to tweak that trail, if there's anything we want to do. But the school uses it not only, they have, they have a program from the road, no rents classes, willing, they, they want to, they're, they're looking at utilizing that as well as cross-country ski trail in the, the wintertime. I mean, it's, there's a whole variety of things that can be used for. And it could be the start in getting that place toward what we'd like to see.
So that's what I'm saying. Is this something that's going to be done by urban system to, to put the trails that are already there, do it, and then we're going to have a discussion with other things to add? That's what I'm trying, trying to understand here.
This, this is not only on the trail, that's all.
So this is for the trails, to do, to do the trails?
Yeah.
So before we have our discussion, this, this concept there is to do a trail with, with this engineer fund. Before we have our discussion and see what kind of input all the council wants.
I think whatever all council wants is going to be discussed before we start making the trail.
Worship would like to put the motion on the floor. That's an order?
Uh, yeah.
Move that, Councilor Mackay. Either that or I'll make the motion, whatever, but I think we should put it on, on the floor.
Second here?
Yes.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor? Okay, Tourism Week. Councilor Kirby.
Thank you, worship. I was just helping with the planning. Tourism Week is coming up from May 28th to June 3rd and from this meeting, this came as a way that the district could help support Tourism Week. And I'd like to make the motion that council authorizes fee, free facility passes for guest staying in local accommodations during Tourism Week, May 28th to June 3rd, 2017.
Second for that? Discussion on it?
So, Councilor Kirby, you say local accommodations, are we talking campground as well?
Yes.
Just to the discretion of.
Yep.
Hey, Simon. Is this Simon's job to leave out ballpark here and the cost? Ballpark here, this would be the cost of district?
No, at this point, no. How many tourists will be in, in that area? But leaving that to the discretion of the community center staff.
The golf course?
I would assume if there's campers staying at the, at the campsite, that, that, that could be included.
You're talking golfing, Councilor Al?
Oh, this is.
That's what it says though, right? It says, it says facilities and now that facility is round by the district of Tumble Ridge.
To clarify, that would be the swimming pool passes, gym passes. It's the, it passes for the community center, not for the golf course. Yes.
So there has to be something changed in that, that motion you made?
I interpreted that to be community center.
Any other discussion on that? On favor? I'm going to add this 10.4 if council will give me a unanimous, next to GeoPark, the things we had earlier today. Discuss that, see what we want to do with that. Is there anybody opposed to it? Okay, and we're going to have a discussion. I, I, I like the idea of having a mobile GeoPark office trailer that we move to the other communities and that, that's what I see as a big benefit for this idea. I, we actually all kind of knew that, at least we were told before that that Vic Center, that building Vic Center was too, too expensive to fix it. I've heard that in previous councils, actually, so that's not a surprise to me. So, you know, we do what we can with that thing. If somebody wants it, we get rid of it. Whether, whether that cordial one goes there or find a better place to put it, I don't know, but that'd be something that we would look down to. Hi, in my view, I'm in favor of Cordial One and I am in favor of backing this NDIT. I think it's an NDIT grant.
So I'm in favor of it if it's passed through NDIT, but I'm not in favor of it if this is something that we're going to just go out and spend some money on, so.
Yeah.
But to prove what she's come in for today, to ask for approval to help with the, to get the grant to go ahead, I don't see any issue at all with it. We do all these other grants and I've never, ever seen one grant that we look at that we ever say, no, jeez, we don't want free money from the district. Which almost boggles my mind why we even put these in here and we got to vote on them. It should just be something that's in the procedures. If there's free money to be had, we shouldn't even have a vote on it. It should just be going for it. Again, it boggles my mind why we waste time doing this, but.
Be somebody against it.
Councilor Kirby.
Thank you, worship. My only other comment would be is that there is funding up to $500,000. And, and that's something that, if that's something that, that we should be looking at, do we include it into some strategic planning? Are there other uses for it? Like again, if we were going to be looking at how we're going to develop that site around the Vic Center and with partnerships with either School District 59, WMNS, all, all of the other groups, you know, that's, that's just another piece of the pot that we should be looking at because that's not, you know, and then I, was I correct in saying that with that money, the partnership would have to be with the district and we would be, how, what was the percentage that the district would have to put into that?
So it would be 40 to 60 and it would be the partnership. So we would find other sources. So the BC Rural Dividend Project would fund 60%. We could go to NDIT, the district, you know, region, whatever, for the other 40%. And in time can be up to 10% of that as well.
That'd be the property.
Yeah, or staff time working on it.
Didn't you say something though in the beginning there that if the project was under $100,000, it was an 80/20 split? And then we would only have to come up to $20,000 and?
Yep, so that's a single applicant.
Right.
So I can on my own just go and apply for a trailer, although I'd like to really open the idea, so I can give you more than that. So single applicant, up to 100 and 80/20, whereas a partnership is 60/40. I think the, the idea is if you're doing a bigger project, you'll want to see a bit more investment on your end. But just that, you know, if it is up to 500 of funds that you can get, then you would absolutely be open to other things that develop the general area. We can talk about that after.
So just with those numbers, say, say it was $500,000 that, that's the one you went for and you approved. $300,000 of that is through NDIT and then we have to come up with $200,000?
No, so we get 500,000 from the province. NDIT isn't the province, they're actually a trust, which is important because you can't apply for the province for the other matching funds. So we could get 500 from NDIT, or see how I'm doing it, 500 from the province. So BC Rural Dividend Fund. Then we have to find, I'm not doing the right math here, 350 we'll say. And of that, we could apply to NDIT for 250 for cultural spaces. Then we find another 100 from someone else. Or if, you know, I mean, we could do a partnership where we only apply for 120, up to a maximum that they provide is 500.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Again, you said free money, why wouldn't you try? Just curious, do we have a report on the Vic Center that was done by the building inspector that went there? Was there, just on that, I remember we talked about this at the beginning when, when the GeoPark came in and you were, we were going to have a reporter, having staff come out, send over whoever you were going to send us on my problem. There was supposed to be a report come back on rehearse that.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming the, the way that Sarah talked to the delegation, that's already done. You already had some comments made by whoever you had look at it? So I'm just wondering if there's a report from that?
There's no report from that. We will be bringing council report, but the report's not going to be.
And if we change our mind on that, we can back. It doesn't have to happen anyways. But we can at least put the application. Hey, on favor?
Councilor Katie, did I?
Well, I just wanted to just ask one other point, I'm just trying to remember what it was the, so the, the idea behind the mobile project would be that we could visit all of the rest of the communities that are having a special event, so on and so on and so forth. And that would take the units out of the community for a period of time. So those that are visiting us here wouldn't have the opportunity to view that or whatever it would happen to be. Now, I don't have a problem with doing that, but I'm just, what I'm wondering, at some point in time, maybe we could do both that. Because there's going to be people here that won't be able to see it and the primary purpose here would be to, to have something that they could view. So that was my only point, your worship, for, for bringing it up, that maybe we could at some point in time consider something here and use that to wherever we want to go for whatever length we want to have it. That was my point. Thank you.
Okay, on favor then? Okay, thank you. Uh, council business. Councilor Mackay.
I attended the NCLGA and there was a few things about this there. One of them was the Municipal Insurance Association was meeting and we talked about property insurance, there was events insurance, which kind of things like Risk Fest might fall under that in which they would offer different user groups liability insurance, legal staff, litigation, up to 50% of normal costs. So that's something that probably would be useful for us. And also there's risk management grants that actually trade, that are used for training staff. Again, the trail for the, are the grants available for, through the Rural Dividend Fund, that was a discussion there. Eco asset management, storm water management plans, that type thing, that there's, and these are all grants. And this one here will be coming up during the FCM. And it's for everything, everything to do with that climate innovation programs that could be for flooding, for fire mitigation, that type thing. So there's going to be quite a lot of that. There was a discussion on wildfires. That was, I think everybody pretty well knows now that the term, the 100-year events are not 100 years anymore, they're five or 10 years and becoming more severe. So again, there was a pretty good discussion on just the fire awareness, fire mitigation programs and, and it really puts into mind, I know, I know that we've done a lot of mitigating in Tumble Ridge with removal of trees and that type thing, but sometimes I think it's got to be reexamined and think it's actually enough when you start seeing just what, what these fires are capable of jumping. Meeting with West Mobley, it went to the, we talked about the treaty land entitlement and I guess things of entitlement that's coming up and how is that, how are we going to implement that and what is it we're both looking for? And there was discussion on taxes, large rural lots, advantages to the community, could be healthcare, could be the schools, even the community center, pocket teams. There's quite, quite a lot of things that actually would, would impact. We are going to have a Community Forest meeting on maybe 18th. And quite, there's going to be quite a few things on the agenda. Upcoming harvest, the quad overlook trail parking, block 21 and 22, the trail plan. And also the, we got, we did get, maybe back in West Fraser and they're going to change their stay and originally planned. We have a lot of funding requests, we'll be looking at those. And also our upcoming conference will be taking a look at, that's, that's running out pretty well, so just finding little touches on it. Forward plan is actually coming up very quickly. So, and that's it.
Uh, one question. I know West Fraser's saying they're going to change their mind after meeting that here and, and it bothers me a little bit, but I think they have a meeting with Forestry. Forestry in here discussing it with them. Have any?
Well, I think they would. It's, it's, it's unfortunate that the area that we're looking for expansion is an area that they, they target after, after we put the application in. So that's, wasn't, this is a design, I don't understand, but, but I mean, that's, that's the nature of the business, I guess, but it definitely helps to talk to Forestry. But it definitely helps to talk to Forestry.
Counselor? Yeah, maybe we should have Forestry come up and talk to us. Say, we can say we're not happy with what's happening on that. You okay with that, Counselor?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, the whole community forest thing is starting to... I don't want to get into this right now, but... And the whole point of the community forest, I thought, is to get to a point where we can get some jobs going out of it, some manufacturing and that type of stuff. I think that's where we should be focused in our efforts rather than chasing down a forestry company that's got rights to that land right now anyways. It's a dead lead. I think we should try to find some way to create jobs out of the community forest.
That's the purpose of the expansion, right? That's what, that's what we're trying.
And, and we're trying to keep it as local as we can.
So you say that with the expansion, that's what our council is trying. Let's say to those guys, even the expansion, you know, crossing the river. They're saying to them, "Well, I'm not saying you guys are wrong. I was, you know, I, I talked with the community forest and this is them and I've attended, not many of it means, but one for sure." And that was, that was the whole process, even in your meeting you guys talked about. When you listen to these guys, we talk to other people, they say that that still would never happen. Sure enough, well, it, yeah. Whether they put it in or not, that's up to them. But it does open up the opportunity for somebody else to put it on the land. And if they've got sales, that's, that's the only factor that needs to be solved.
The only connection we got with, with forest, community forest, and if we don't, if we don't keep pushing that, we're gonna have nothing. So, I think, I think. Can we try to even get a meeting arranged with Forestry sometime in the near future?
The goal would be to?
To discuss community forest and, and the expansion, I guess.
See what they can do for us to stop Wes Fraser?
Yeah.
I'll take the cut out of you guys. Nothing to report.
Counselor Hopp? Uh, just a little update on the Bull Moose project there and just a question to counsel. Is this something that, although it's a small project, not the same size as Meco or Quality? Do we wanna ask Boralex to attend the meeting and just give us an update on what they're doing up there and what the plans are for the project? That somebody that kind of slipped through the cracks. Is that flavor of counsel that we should be talking to these guys? It's four turbines, but... They are, there's some tourist ideas with these as well. They're the largest turbines in, I don't know if it's, it's definitely North America, but they may be the largest land turbines built right now. They're huge. Hundred thirty-six meters to the hub height. They're an additional, what are they, twenty-six meters higher to the hub than the ones we have here already. So they'll be over six hundred feet to the tip of the blades, the mass of these turbines. So blades come in in two sections and the bulk of the, the product starts coming in in July. I think it's ju, late July, sorry, mid-July is when the bulk of the product starts coming in, so.
I sure appreciate him coming in and giving us an update on what's going on, stuff. You okay with that?
Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, worship. Well, I attended quite a few meetings kind of regarding my portfolios this week. I had a PAC meeting, our Economic Development Office will be bringing a report to counsel here shortly in the future. And with the Museum Foundation, they're still working on getting their last few questions ready to, to get their fee-for-service funding. PAC meeting, they're already, you know, exciting stuff going on there with the go-kart race. So yeah, we, there's an invitation to all the counsel to be at that race on Friday. We, the kids are pretty excited and they've changed their route a little bit because during, during their test drives, they're taking that corner back into the school too fast. So, you know, they're a little bit worried about tipping. Also attended the Wes Moberly meeting regarding the urban reserves. It's, it's, that's an interesting, it's gonna be, from council to council, that's, that whole process is, it's taken a long time. I don't think it's gonna be, I think there's still a lot more work to go into that. Canada Day. I hung my new flag up. I'm excited about it. I hope, hope residents in Tumblr put a new flag up this year too to celebrate Canada's 150th birthday. And regards out to the Funk family, we lost Lorraine this weekend. I worked with Lorraine, with Lorraine on, I guess, with the chamber and having a business in town, we, we had lots of little chats walking to the bank. So she's gonna be missed in town and the paper as well. That's it for me.
Nothing to report this time, your worship.
I've had a busy couple of weeks. Just on the, yesterday I guess it was, had a meeting with a doctor tonight. We are, Dr. Pelé is moving on. So it creates a few problems. We had a doctor come out from his, he's actually a Fort Mac and his wife is working for St. John's. She's an engineer there. And he come out to look at the Denver Ridge, see if he thought he could come here. And Dr. Ham took him to all the usual spots, the museum and all that. After we had, we had stuff with them and discussed a lot of stuff. And then we took him up to my place there and show your flag, you know, and... And they were about the property and they thought, they're just in love with the Denver Ridge area. So they, Dr. Ham said, "Don't make your mind up now. Think about it, you know, or think about it." But Dr. Ham's idea is that if Denver Ridge is his number one pick and he's our number one pick, this, this could happen. So that would, that would solve the problem with the... That's some good news, bad news stuff. I had a couple of meetings with the museum and arranged a meeting with the GeoPark, but I've talked to the president. And I've come up with an idea. We've got some issues there as we all know at the last couple of meetings of the GeoPark. And I come up with an idea and I asked them if we, if we had, they got a consultant. The board at the GeoPark got a consultant and the board at the museum got a consultant. And we had these consultants look at the issues and then get together at a meeting. I suggested a chair meeting with those consultants and maybe a person from the regional district. And go through what, what, what we need, what our next steps are. We seem to be right now stuck in the mud. And I would like to send a letter talking about this to each of the board members from the GeoPark and the museum, making the suggestion that they, having a cons, out-of-town consultants come in. And the two, the two that I think off the top of my head, and I'm not picking them, it'd be the boards picking them, but the Andy Hackerman who the museum works with quite a bit and Brett Bennett who the GeoPark has worked with. Both guys that know the issues. They don't live in town. They don't have the, they don't have the history to work with. They, they can, they can sit there and make really good suggestions of where we should, we have to go because we can't seem to, we seem to be having a problem with ourselves. And I think it's more personalities and it is, I think everybody wants the same thing. They want the best for the district, but we can't seem to get to that point. And I would like to send a letter to the board and ask them to look at doing this. And if their boards make that, make that decision and if they do, like I said, I discussed it with a couple of the board members. I've talked, discussed with the president of the museum and the president of the GeoPark and they're both willing to look at it. And it just might be something that can get us moving ahead again. Been doing great, I think, at the GeoPark. But we've seemed to have something lacking in that. We have the museums, scientific experts not, not gonna be involved with the GeoPark. I think that's an issue. And I, and I know, I know it's called growing pains, a lot of meetings I've been at. I'm worried that it's one of the pains and I think it's something that we should be dealing with. This letter, trying to get some consultants to be part of this. This is where I'd like to go and then actually we could do the letter and everybody, email it to counsel and if they all agree with it, they would send it up.
Counselor Kirby?
Question on the consultants. Who would be paying for the consultants to be attending?
I've asked Mr. Wall to have a look into grants and see if we can do that.
Just on that note, your worship, I think the, this council has done, gone above and beyond to support both of these groups. We've had a visioning session earlier this year. And that visioning session was a, a good way for counsel to, to figure out on how we spend our money and on, on ways that those groups working together can get us in line for provincial funding. And, you know, I, I think that as much as I, I, I will always stay positive working with those groups. I think we, I don't know if, if, if something like this would be beneficial. I think the groups, they have a project that, that was stemmed through the museum and has now, you know, has brought the GeoPark. And, and why that isn't still so exciting for both groups? I think counsel needs to figure out the direction we wanna go. And if groups have, you know, their boards do what, you know, they have their own mandates, but this council has a mandate on how we spend our money and what we wanna see them for, with that. And I think once we're clear on that, it's either those groups are on board or not. And, you know, I, that's my opinion on that. I don't believe myself that that will work as, as far as counsel being involved in that stuff.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to be, have is counsel not involved. Because I know what, I know what we're, we're, we do, we're able to fund it. We've got a lot invested here.
We do.
And if, if, if this thing fell apart, let's say the worst-case scenario fell apart, we're in for a big hurt for why we've invested in this, these ideas. And I, and I, and all I'm saying here is that I don't think counsel should be that involved with, with their decision. They're two separate boards, but they have some issues right now. And that's all I'm saying is that, this, I'm just coming up with an idea because I, actually my, my first step here was to say I was backing away from all this stuff and I was asked not to. So I come up with this idea and I, and I, and I think it might work. Because I think you gotta, you gotta take it out, out of town because we haven't been able, to be able to mount and make the right decisions with our, with the local people involved with these two organizations. And I guess if counsel's not happy with it, that's, that's fine. I, and I don't do it, but just asking. And I, get a show of hands to, Counselor Katie, do you wanna say something or?
Well, your worship, I, I certainly don't have any problems with the GeoPark. I don't have any problems with it though. I think they're a sharp, smart outfit that are on a right track. And I have a tremendous amount of difficulty with the Timber Ridge Museum Foundation and their attitude. And I expressed my feelings on that subject before. And I don't think any discussions, whether it be the two individuals that you mentioned or not, are, are gonna be able to solve that problem. But my biggest concern is the fact that, and the solution is, in my opinion, is what counsel has discussed previously, is that the overall global GeoPark, one of the entities that is included in there is the Timber Ridge Museum and its operations and so on and so forth. And the fact that the principals aren't interested in that happening and wanna carry on doing it independently in their way, I think is wrong. And I think from a counsel perspective in terms of, of granting funds and so forth to go to the GeoPark, to be able to meet their expectations and, and also to help them with their plans. And they, working together with the Museum Foundation, takes a tremendous amount of pressure off us. I think they're capable of handling that. And that in terms of the monies that they require, the global GeoPark would be coming here, requesting funds and so forth, of which, assuming the counsel concurred with that, would grant the funds. And the, the split or whatever it would happen to be would be between the Timber Ridge Museum Foundation and the global GeoPark. And I certainly, for, for one, don't have any confidence whatsoever that with the existing organization that exists today, that it will work unless that, that particular path that I've recommended is followed. I just don't see too much of it. And it seems to go round and round and round and round. But I think we'd be missing a real bet for counsel not to, and assuming the global GeoPark is interested in it, is that's our primary funding source and they will dole those dollars out of which they're capable of doing to whoever else is included within their overall umbrella. That's my feeling on it. Thank you.
Okay, well, I said, that's, that's a counsel decision, what you're talking about there. I'm not talking about that, but you're talking about getting the issue that the two groups seem to have. Can I get that show of hands to, to send a letter to the boards to suggest this? Or show of hands that people agree with me?
I'm not, if I can, what is the letter?
It's just to ask them to talk to, to come up with a consultant of some kind to address the issues between the two groups and try to sort them out.
Who, and who's gonna be choosing the consultant, Jim?
The boards.
The boards.
And I, I think this would be, it gotta be, this should be diamond on it. And it should be something that is, when these suggestions come back, they have got to be adhered to. It's not a, feel like they said the right thing. It's a consultant saying the right thing, so.
Thank you, worship. Have you already talked to the groups? Are the groups actually willing?
I talked to two presidents and they, 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 they can see some value in the, in the idea.
Also, do you think that they will take counsel, asking them to do this, as another way of counsel trying to direct their boards? I, I'm just, and, and, and just, like, if I vote in the negative on this, this isn't because I don't support the GeoPark and I don't, and the museum. I support both. I just don't know if this process is gonna be something that either one group will want to, to take part in or if it would be, if it will even have the outcome that we would hope it would have. So I will be voting against that, yeah.
So it's one against it?
Just, just on that, I mean, so you've talked to presidents and what I consider happens is they're making decisions until they take it back to their board. Board could say, no.
They just?
I was just curious. I was trying to get the whole thing in. And my thing is, I don't remember the company that went already up to the Timber Ridge Museum about this year, but the previous council, and there was a big list of stuff. They didn't even want to do those recommendations. So I just don't wanna see us spend money on consultants and one group loves it, one group doesn't take it any. I don't, I think we need to have that.
One more person says they don't wanna do it, then it's done. Counselor? All right. Yes, Colin Griffiths is coming up here to go talk with us on the coalition and where it's at right now. When we're at NCLGA, it's up and Mr. Wall talked to the Fraser Basin group, counsel, about if you come up with some federal money for flood, fire mitigation. And I think for us, it'd be the fire more than, more than the flood, everything. And maybe we can get some more money to do a little more fire saving. I've watched that Fort Mac stuff and I, it just kinda scares you. Yeah, and Lorraine said here that we've had a love-hate relationship. And we, we both respected each other, I think. That's a big part of this town for a lot of years. Hey, Mr. Wall?
Just on Mr. Griffiths attending, if counsel has questions they wanna ask of the coalition, what their plans are, what they're doing, if you wanted to give those to me beforehand, I can forward them to Mr. Griffiths. He said he'd do his best to answer the questions he gave when he was here. But if there's things you know you wanna ask, he asked if you could just give a little bit of a heads up.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us where? Russian answer period. Go ahead, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that I deal with a lot of the five, six provincial parks in the GeoPark battery frequently and increasing access and stuff like that is one of the things we do. Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that I deal with a lot of the five, six provincial parks in the GeoPark battery frequently, and increasing access and stuff like that is one of the things we do. So, while paving isn't particularly, or gravel, I think, not so, but extending the season and creating more access or wheelchair accessibility is another big topic that's on the website, but not really real if we're looking at facilities. So if the district of Timber Ridge would like a letter of support or a show of support in meetings, that kind of thing, just let the GeoPark know. Would you, I don't know if I'm supposed to actually ask a question, but would you like us to support you in these missions?
We have discussed asking you to show up, but, sir, and there's one with the regional district that, off the top of my mind, that when it does happen, will be for sure asking you to come.
Okay.
For your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you. April?
So, a couple of things going back to Bylaw 644, one of them is I would like to address page 15. Will food be sold at the market? And vendors, if yes, please submit a list of all food vendors, low-risk foods may be sold without Northern Health approval, high-risk foods must have it. I just wanted to draw attention on that. I also have a question.
Sorry, I just, where are you at there?
On page 15.
Fifteen of?
Of the bylaw.
Page 15, I'm on the agenda. Page 15, you did.
And where are you reading the three of the agenda? Sorry to cut you off there, I saw you was lost there.
Also, concerning the candidate day vendors. If this bylaw goes through before July 1st, will the district be carrying the $5 million in liability insurance? Or will all vendors have to go and purchase their own, which would cost us $125 each?
The way I understood it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wall, but I thought when we had an event, that the one event organizer carried the liability insurance. If I'm mistaken, if everyone has that habit?
Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Counselor House, so maybe just make a couple of things clear on this. The bylaw creation is a process, so the questions on this thing is, they're going to come, so we've heard what the feedback is, and that's why the district has sent out 160 notices to try and get feedback from the businesses. This is a process, so what was trying to be done on the community market aspect of it is that actually the district would be one of the few places that would allow non-licensed businesses to come in and act as businesses under these things, so that was the goal. I need to take this back on this area, because what's been done is we pulled basically two different categories from other communities and blended them into one. So, on this part, it might not have worked the way we had intended, so I need to go back and take a look at this family, and it's great to hear this feedback because we're not, we didn't consider the end user. Our goal was one person organizing the event takes care of everything, and it sounds like that might not be possible, so that's something we need to take a look at. So I don't have an answer to that question right now, but we'll come back. And just for council's timelines, counsel, you've done two readings of this business license bylaw, so the third reading would be coming probably not until your July meeting, because it's gonna take time for staff to go back and research these questions. So I would say the earliest you'd be looking at adoption, if everything was to go past from here, wouldn't be until maybe August. So I would say there's not much risk of this bylaw being adopted before, at least August.
You know, just to say that we're doing this bylaw trying to make it better, and your submissions are helping us do that, so. Not there yet, but we're working on it.
Okay. A couple other things I forgot, seeing as it's coming up Tourism BC. I just thought that council and the district should know that my canning will be in the next issue of the Tourism BC magazine. Professional pictures were taken, and I will be in the magazine, which I thought that was, you know, a good accomplishment for Timber Ridge because we are pushing tourism in Timber Ridge, that's what we're all about, right? I'm also in the Dawson newspaper, I was also just put in there and put that, you know, this comes, that my canning comes from Timber Ridge BC. So another shout-out to Timber Ridge. I also just want to let council know that I donated 27 donations last year to the district of Timber Ridge. I supported SSS by six, I did grad, every golf tournament, everything that came up. I also purchased most of my supplies in the district of Timber Ridge to support Timber Ridge. And also, I was approved to sell my canning at the VIC. And when they came in to purchase their business license, they were told that I was not allowed to purchase, or was not allowed to sell at the VIC Center because the district owned the building and that you were saying I couldn't sell there. So I would really like if at some point in time, the council and district of Timber Ridge could give me a reasoning because the rules were brought up for the VIC Center, the rules are exactly the same as a farmer's market, and I was 100% within the rules to sell at the VIC. I was developing and designing labels of a dinosaur eating a pickle to promote Timber Ridge. And right before I ordered my labels, I was contacted by the Chamber of Commerce and said that the district of Timber Ridge had shut me down. So, at some point in time, I would love to have an explanation of why.
That would be noted, and we will.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, my girlfriend had to leave, she had a question. Will council still accept written concerns about Bylaw 644? If so, who do we direct them to?
Mr. Wall would be the gentleman to direct them to.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't know why that's something that can't be answered by staff at this meeting. If there was a reason why, I mean, I think I know what it is, but I'd rather staff comment on it, and I think that has something to do with not having a business license, I would assume, at that point, but can we get an answer further on this, or is this something you guys need to research a little more? I can, the, I don't, I'm not aware of any discussions that happened about what can be sold at the VIC or what can't be sold. I can say that you need a business license to sell at the visitor information center, so that would probably be it. Maybe if Mrs. Cooper can make an appointment to come in and see me, we can find out what the issues are in obtaining a business license from the district.
Okay, and actually, in the visitor information center rules, there is no rule that I have to have a business license if I am low-risk and do not have to be approved by Northern Health. So again, a contradiction of rules.
Sure, we can look into that and see what happened. But I would recommend you have a meeting with Mr. Wall and go through some of your.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No, go ahead.
I'm just gonna throw this out there since April's saying wonderful things about Tumblr and what she's done. I'm one of the top salespeople for Avon between Prince George and Grand Prairie, and I'm in a town of 1,500 people. So, we, small businesses, do a lot for this community.
We know that.
Sometimes you need to be reminded.
Thank you for that. Okay, and the press?
Now we're good, guys.
Okay, we're done. I guess we gotta put it closed, somebody can take me down.
Yeah, motion to move to close.
Okay.